From David, did you hear anything from David?
Uh, yes, I think he, was it this week, he's down in, I think he's down in Phoenix for meetings.
Oh, okay.
Now that I, now that I think of it.
Okay, alright.
Lindsay, if you wanna get yourself more room over there, I forgot that-
Oh, that's okay.
That David's not gonna be here.
Okay, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, let's see, do we have the, I think she added, yeah, the additional, we're good. It's ten one through ten three that were added, uh-
Contracts?
Yep.
Okay, uh, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some more.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, move, uh, public comments and recognition, nobody, thank you for taking the time to come, thank you, um, six point one is middle school report, I see Heidi.
And I think we covered, we covered that one at the last, or she's gonna do the next one, that's what it is, she, she's gonna do the first one in June.
Okay.
So, we'll wait on, on that one, she's getting through graduation online.
Oh, sure.
Okay, alright, moving on to six point two, that's the high school, Mr. Lepard, hello.
Hello.
So you handed something out to you.
Yeah.
Looks like this, yeah, alright, so, that's the agenda there, but if you flip to the next page, I would say probably about a month ago, I had four students from this, Ms. Martin's class called Small Group come to me and wanted to show me something that they'd been working on, and they were, they were gonna come tonight, three of the four couldn't come, and the fourth one didn't wanna come by themselves, so I'm talking for all four of them, so, uh, they shared their all line with me and some pictures here, but it, the, kinda give you a synopsis of what it says, it was, uh, they came to me and said that they were to solve a problem as a team, and their problem was to, uh, fix the parking problem on Broadway in Fargo, that's where it started, and then they took their concept that they came up with and showed me the same concept for our high school parking lot, and, um, I forget what they call it, but, uh, the way we have our cars parked, if you turn to the first picture page, or the second page I have there, you see how we have everybody in pretty much ninety degree turns when we park, and you see how much space is taken when a car turns into their parking spot, their concept is the picture to the right, uh, maybe I don't have it there for you.
All one way.
All one way.
See the difference?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it, it's on, it's actually on your aerial picture on the second one, the difference, but this is a little easier to see it. Okay. So essentially what it does is it creates a one-way traffic flow in and out of the parking lots, and it should create more parking spaces, um, I never measured out the whole area of the whole, of the parking lot, the perimeter and everything like that, but it, it seems like something that would be worth checking into or looking into, and, you know, the other suggestion is they, something that wouldn't have to be reconstructed or rebuilt if we just repainted stripes and had signs up, so, um, so that's one thing that they do in that class, each group is, I mean, we're talking about post-high school skills that kids are supposed to be working on, and that's one of them, where they're working as a team, trying to solve problems, real world, uh, types of problems there too, so.
Before, before you move on from that one, do they see any issues on congestion coming out on the park? Because now there are one-ways all coming to the west.
Mm-hmm.
And now that means nobody's gonna be coming out on the park from the parking lot, they gotta come out on the seventh and then compete with all the buses.
Right.
Get that road finished, this would-
They didn't-
Right, but which, which-
They're just talking within the lot themselves, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, I love the idea that they're-
I do too.
You know, definitely.
I, I, I do.
But I mean, the, the thing is to try to separate the exit points.
Yeah, but I think too, and they showed it to me in the, the lot out by the track, and, like I said, the perimeter, I don't know if there's enough space to have two rows of that concept because of the width of the, the concrete out there, but I know for sure by the gym or on that lot, I think we could do something like that.
The other, the other thing that they should be aware of, just so that they know, I, I, I love the fact that they're bringing this or-
Oh, absolutely.
Um, but we know that with the Park Avenue project, they're planning on at most allowing us to have one entrance into the parking lot, so the two existing ones will not be there.
Have to make a circle or loop then.
So, we know that we only have one way of coming into the parking lot, so that's gonna be another-
That's congestion, yeah.
So it's just something that they need to be aware of, so, okay.
I like it, although I love their creativity.
I do too.
I do.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Okay, so next thing on there I have is just FYI's, if you haven't seen these things yet, um, the last page, front and back, uh, is the final schedule, which starts tomorrow, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, um, based on periods, it's a modified schedule, it's essentially about an hour and a half per class on forty, or, yeah, about an hour and a half, hour and forty minutes, and then it's Friday, uh, doing something different this year, each, uh, activity group, some of them would hand out, so in past history, a lot of them would just hand out their awards in the spring as a, as an activity, and some saved it for an awards assembly in the gym, that type of thing, or the theater, we decided to go this year with all activities, hand your things out, uh, in the spring, and then we're doing a senior awards breakfast at seven on Friday morning, uh, we'll meet in the Collins, have roll and fruit, juice, coffee, congregate together, and then walk down into the theater and do, uh, graduation cords, senior cords, and, uh, any scholarship matters, and then at eight thirty, we start graduation rehearsal, practice, and then by ten o'clock, they're done, and the seniors anyway, and seventh grade has their final at, at the same time we're practicing, and then makeups are at ten fifteen till about noon, and, and most kids are gonna be done and ready to leave.
Okay.
Then we have lunch after.
I missed something because you, you said they're gonna do graduation practice right at eight thirty?
Mm-hmm.
But this says ten fifteen.
Oh, I copied the wrong one then, but it should, it should be during period seven. Is, uh, graduation practice and, and, uh, period seven final?
So-
Graduation practice should be where it says eight fifteen.
So the seniors don't have any period seven final?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We had two seniors that had a period seven, so we're having them do it ahead of time.
Okay. So period, okay, it says, one more time, so period seven final, and graduation practice are all at-
Eight twenty.
At eight twenty, and then what's that, ten, makeups?
Makeup finals.
So, if they don't have a makeup final-
They're essentially done, or we're having activities in the building.
Okay. Um, and this came on a leadership team meeting, I'm assuming, um, just some feedback for the leadership team, I have had a number of correspondence from parents about that change, about not having it during the, the awards during the day, um, you know, it, because if, my understanding is the award ceremony, then the rest of the student body won't-
No.
-be seeing it, so, I'll forward them to you so you can go over it with them.
Sure.
It's just, uh, you know, a couple of them, a couple of the emails just said, you know, missed opportu-, is it a missed opportunity for our youngest kids in the high school to have an opportunity to acknowledge our student, our-
Scholarship.
Our student scholars, so, just something that we can share with the leadership team.
Um, then just some FYI's on some other things for the summer, master schedule is essentially done for next fall, uh, took the big, the pre-registrations in February, put that together, um, probably the biggest, my biggest hope is trying to create more electives for kids, um, I've kinda run into some, uh, what's the, bigger classes, it's coming in next year is one thing, versus, we have about a hundred and twenty kids versus seventy leaving, um, so, what's happening is it's creating, I'm having to squeeze a little bit on the core classes, um, which, yeah, could push them up to about thirty kids on some of them, um, and, uh, but it's, teachers know that's coming, and that'll be, it'll be fine, um, otherwise, there's just a few tweaks that I'd need to fine tune yet, otherwise, I think by the second week of June, we should be able to, or third week, we should be able to put everybody into another courses and be ready to go. Um, some summer work items this summer, um, I'm kinda making some side notes to myself on the handbook and course guidebook, so we'll, we'll get those ready by August, um, but we'll do some heavy light work in June with, uh, I've got my ideas already kinda written up already, but I'll go over some of those with our site team, and then, uh, review with, uh, Mr. Tigerson as well, and bring them forward by late July, early August for those readings. Um, just with the winter snow days that we had this year, it was always kind of a, uh, brought up at six twelve, leadership, site team, some of our staff, with e-learning days as a possibility, maybe considering some ideas for that this summer, and bringing those to our leadership teams, online student course options, uh, in our, in our guidebook, it's not real clear on some of that, so I just need to look at, um, and get some feedback, I guess, as to where to go with some of that, I know one of our options might be Apex as a route to go with some of that, sometimes I look at if, if we offer the course within already, so maybe not offer it somewhere else, or some, some, how, online is, is what I'm thinking, or not to do that, um, sometimes kids, um, if we offer the course, they don't want it because of whatever reason it might be, and they're, they're looking for an alternative way, well, if we offer it, I think we need to, the student needs to take it that way. Um, so just different things like that, review over between the student guidebook and handbook. Um, some possibilities, I know we're, we're applying for an ALP, uh, within the high school and, um, a little bit into the eighth grade, and so, some of that'll be this summer with the eighth grade, and then next year, uh, we're looking at, uh, within the high school in the alternative learning program, um, essentially what that is, we're, we're referring kids out right now to alternative schools like Yes and, and RALC, and we could use that within our own school, um, next year, and what I have on there is just some possibilities to consider for the following years, maybe some summer school options for the high school, not this summer, but next summer, and, uh, but asked several times about after-school study help, and maybe that might be something we look at next year too. Thoughts, questions?
Who would help with the after-school study, like, just different teachers?
Could be.
Like, that would be volunteering, or kind of?
Um, if it's through the ALP application, I think we could get, um, some dollars that way.
Yeah, we've got a couple of funding streams, one is with our, um, alternative learning program, if the students are involved for, for course, for credits, then that automatically creates a funding stream, um, we have a second one through the Clay County Cooperative that gives us a little pot of money for, um, extended day programming, uh, for tutoring and such, then the other one, there's another one, which is achievement and integration, and so, with, we basically have a, a few different pots of money that, I think what I'd like to do is schedule this summer, um, schedule a work session for the board, where we bring in six twelve, bring in the, uh, the administration, and we just talk career and college readiness, 'cause then we can talk ALP, we can talk about these different funding streams that can open up some things at the middle school and high school, so that gives the six twelve group, uh, leadership some time to work on some of the plans, and then once they've got a plan ready, then we'll do a work session with the board, so we can go a little more in depth with it. Dwayne's hearing this for the first time too.
Mm.
But we've been, we've been working on this a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to the six point four, the superintendent report.
So, I gave you-
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on.
Oh, missed one?
I did, six point three.
Gotcha.
Board committee report, sorry, Laura, you were going to speak on?
Oh, we, uh, last week, we interviewed candidates for the business manager position, um, and the one that was selected is here tonight, his name is Eric Exner, so we're really excited to have him on board, um, and I guess the only other thing that we really talked about was the needs, um, within the special education department, I don't know if there's anything-
Some of the hiring?
The hiring needs, yeah.
And when we get into those action items, um, I'll, uh, I'll bring up, before we hit any of those, I'll bring up, actually, I'm gonna do my report, when I think about it, uh, some of the, what we still have left to fill.
Okay, okay, did anybody have any other committee reports?
I do not.
Nope, okay, alright, Brian, now it's you, six point four.
Okay, so, over the last twelve hours, uh, and I know all of you have, should have received the MRAA update, uh, if you don't, Ronnie, did you get that one now? 'Cause we should have all of, all of you, Laura, you get it, there should be an email that, they did a real, real nice report, if you wanna take a look at the MRAA one that I printed out for you, the one that has the side-by-side, I'm not going to bore you going through the whole eleven page, or twelve, what is it, thirteen pages actually, uh, but this is probably the most comprehensive one I've seen them put out before, um, so you can see exactly how this came together, uh, between what the governor proposed, what the House proposed, uh, what they came up with, what the Senate came up with, and then the special session, so, they, you know, going, going back, they had to be done, I believe it was on the, uh, the twenty-second maybe, they, they, they had a particular deadline date that they had to be done by, twenty-first or twenty-second, um, and then, as far as the legislature, and from that point, all last week, uh, the committees sat down, and they worked behind the scenes all week until they got to a particular point that they felt, yeah, we're, we've got agreements coming between these, uh, uh, the House and the Senate, of course, come up with a committee, uh, and for each one of these pieces, and then Friday, the governor called for a special session, basically twenty-four hours, uh, as you may have read in MRAA, and, uh, MSBA is coming out with a, a WebEx on June third at noon, not the greatest timing for us because of some of the things we have going on, um, but, uh, this is a, this is a good summary of it, basically, they worked throughout the night, and they finished up at seven o'clock, uh, in the morning, on Saturday morning, with this, and, uh, the good news is, they came up with a tax bill, as you'll see in here, um, you can see everything that was brought up by the governor, the House, or the Senate, and when you look at the special session or in the far right, you're gonna see the final that came out of it, so you'll see whether it was no provision in the end, or which one they went with, so a lot of times it'll say same as Senate, same as House, same as Governor, so this gives you the full description of everything, uh, the formula, I, I think we did as well as we could've done with the formula, the two and two, um, I remember at the town hall meetings, uh, I think Paul at that time was talking the one and a half, you know, that they, that he thought, um, the conversations I had with Paul, he just didn't wanna say it publicly, they were shooting for two and two, that was the hope, if we could get two and two, that would be fantastic, um, so we got the two and two, um, the other things I would point out that, um, I think are gonna be pretty important, on the first page, the referendum equalization for tier two, that's for, notice it says, increase operating referendum tier two factor from five-ten to five-sixty-three, of course, what that means is we get more equalization, more state aid, so, um, this affects specifically the excess operating levy, so when we went to the public back in two thousand and thirteen and asked for the second ballot question to go up to six hundred dollars or, which was converted to five hundred dollars afterwards with the new pupil units, that, we went to the maximum, um, we've gone to the maximum on, everybody's been able to go to the, the seven hundred and twenty-some, that gets to the, the cap on, on tier two, this is giving us a little bit better equalization, so, of course, anything that's an excess operating, you get aid for, part of it becomes aid, part of it becomes levy, uh, so it just means that we're gonna get the same amount of money, it's not that the school district's getting more money, it means the levy's gonna go down a little bit, 'cause more of it's gonna go over to aid, so that's a good thing for, for John Q. Public, okay, so that's a plus. Um, save schools revenue, notice one time, they like doing the one time, so they don't have to worry about having it on the formula, so there's, I, I have a meeting next week, uh, all the superintendents meet, uh, we get the update from Tom Melcher, and that's when we'll find out specifically on this one-time money on save schools at the bottom of the first page, so, that was a plus. Um, still waiting on the PTEC, second page, um, you notice there was, on the second page, there's a few different CTE ones, and in the end, the ones that got funded were the PTEC and the Rural CTE Consortium grant, so those got in there, notice Breckenridge got their agreement, which I'm happy for them, because they should've been able to get that, they're doing some really, really good things with school science, so that got in there. Special ed, we got, uh, some more, which was really good on the cross subsidy, so you can just go over to the governors and see exactly what the details are on it, but, um, again, right now, we have to wait to find out exactly what came out of that PTEC. Um, I brought up before the fact that there was multiple bills to provide extended day, extended year funding for C, CTE, and for STEM STEAM type of coursework, we don't know what is out of that PTEC yet for the language, so we have to wait and see, we won't know until next week, um, but I'm crossing my fingers on that, I really hope, I talked to Paul today for quite a while, um, just to get his take on it, and he didn't know either, so I mean, that, that gives you an idea of, of how this is, kind of a lot of midnight agreements, and you wait to see the details as they flush through, um, so, those are a couple of the big ones, on the third page, of course, is another big one, now we get into on taxes, so, on taxes, Ag to School, uh, you probably have heard that it went up to fifty, it's phased in for four years, potentially up to seventy, so it goes fifty, fifty-five, sixty, and then year four, it goes to seventy, this is all assuming that there is money, but Paul said it will be, the fifty's in, so that's a good thing, we got the fifty for sure, uh, does it, it doesn't change how much money we get as a school district, again, uh, and I think those are some of those talking points that are important for board members, when you, you know, the public may think, this is a lot of brand-new money that schools are getting, we're not getting any more money, this is simply changing what percentages are local tax compared to state aid, so I, I think it's a, it's an important message that, my God, the state's spending all this money, yes, but they're transferring it from local to state. Okay, um, so, you can see on the Ag to School, a lot of the next pages, you're gonna see no provisions, and because the rest of these pages, if you look at the topic at the top, it says policy, and from our vantage point as school administrators, the less policy changes, the better, because typically what happens is, it's more things we've gotta do that are called unfunded mandates, so the more of these that we see that are no provision, I'm happy when I see those things, and you'll see that through almost all of them, um, so, to me, that's the highlights, that's the major highlights of this, if you see some things as you go through this on your own time, uh, feel free to call me, email me, whatever, and I'll tell you whether I have more info on it that I've been able to dig through, um, or at the very least, what I'll do is I'll make sure next week when I meet with Melcher, that I bring it up, so, please, you know, if you got a chance, take some time, look at it, um, but I, that's a really, it's a real good report, I believe. The second one I gave you is, um, in the MRAA report, there was also links to, so you could go in and look specifically at the, the runs, the table runs for school districts, and anybody can download this, um, it'll be a Excel spreadsheet that you simply put in the number of the school district, so I put in twenty-one sixty-four, the template is identical for every district, you have two sets of data, the first two pages are simply giving you our total dollar amounts, so what you're seeing is, if you look at page one, it, 'cause it's a similar concept, so you got base nineteen, so that's where we are sitting right now before the legislative session began, and then you got your base, and you got your conference, um, for fiscal twenty, so, when you see base, it means, okay, now with the legislation, what took place, and you can see that the base went on adjusted pupil units from sixteen forty-seven up to sixteen eighty at the top there, everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is that thirty-three dollars, which represents a two percent increase. So we got a two and two, so if you simply take two percent, that's what got it to sixteen eighty, and when you look at fiscal twenty-one, it went to sixteen ninety-six, there's your And you can see exactly based on that amount of money, um, it's our pupil units, they're taking our pupil units, increasing, but then they're taking a two percent increase, and that's why the basic ed, aid went to eleven-two-thirty-one, eleven million-two-thirty-one up to eleven million-five-thirteen, in other words, we gained about a hundred and eighty thousand, or two hundred and eighty thousand dollars because of the two percent. So overall, overall, um, through the conference committee, our total general ed aid is gonna go from fourteen million ninety-four to fourteen million-six-seventy-nine, and now I'll be able to start inputting everything into the what-if, and have this stuff ready for June.
Conference means what, just the final?
That's what, yup, that's the final, yup, that's what came out of the special session. So anything in the conference, that's what you wanna look at, and that next column is just showing how much more money, um, we got over the base, we're, of course, we have more money coming in from fiscal nineteen simply because of an increase of two percent. So, the first two pages are simply the total money, the next two pages are the same concept based on how much the pupil units, and that's where, when I was talking about the thirty-some, you can see basic, and this year was sixty-eight nineteen, they're, they're showing for, uh, and then it goes by per pupil unit, sixty-eight fifty-three, and then through conference, sixty-eight ninety, um, and you can see how much it is over the base, the total amount of money, per pupil unit, so it's just, it's, it's the same comparison, one is total dollars, one is the changes in, based on per pupil unit, that's why you've got two reports. Any clarification questions on it, or, I didn't wanna just spend twenty more minutes on it, I thought this way, as long as you, you can see what's there, take a look at it, study it a little bit, feel free to give me a call, uh, or set up a meeting, and we'll sit down and walk through all of it, and this'll be the basis now on, on setting up the revenue for next year.
Basically, we're getting about ninety-nine hundred dollars per pupil unit the first year, if you add special ed and-
Yeah, we, we come out really well with the special ed. Yeah, we come out really well with the special ed. The, in fact, when I was looking at all the school districts in the state, because we have such a high special ed cost, we come out better than a lot of, we come out better in Morehead and a lot of the other ones. And to make it even better than that, because a lot of those costs are associated with open road students, what do we get to do? We get to bill it back, and 90% of the cost goes back to the residential district. So. I don't say that a lot when I'm around Brandon because him and I, we have a fun time with that. BGF comes up pretty well on special ed. So when we-
90% the first year or so.
Yeah. So this is, overall, it was a good session. Disappointment is there's no bonding bill. That's what, why, today I was, I spent about an hour and a half just making phone calls this afternoon to see if anybody knew anything else. And what was frustrating was, if you, I received another update from MASA, the Superintendent Association, from Valerie, who does, she's done a lot with MREA, she's been around there for a long time. And her summary said that the governor, the House, the Senate, all had an agreement on a target, on a bonding bill. And they had to close this thing up by 7 o'clock Saturday morning. And because usually the, every other year is a bonding bill year, and this wasn't a bonding bill year, they just said, you know, we got the tax bill done, we got the Omnibus E-12 bill done, we'll wait on it. They had to convince five more from the minority to cross over and support the bonding bill, and we would've had it, and this road would've gotten done. But, but, the good news is, there will be a bonding bill next time. It is a high priority. We probably weren't going to get that road done this summer anyway. So if it happens in the 2020 legislative session, we'll get it done. So it was mixed messages about it, but we just have to wait a little while longer. It'll happen. That's all I've got?
All right.
Other than the special ed. I said I'd mention that, I'm sorry, but, so, right now on special ed, as I, and I emailed all of you over the weekend about it, we have one position yet to fill, non-speech. We have a speech one yet to fill, okay? We're hoping for, you know, we're filling one of the two speech positions tonight. We still have one more that we, we have advertised, and we may have to go doing the same thing we did this year, where the person can't do some of the components of it, which puts more burden on our other special ed instructors. But we may have to go to that realm again. But we'll leave that one open. So we have a special ed for speech, and we have the high school position open. Because remember, we had Hannah Fisher resign, and then we were going to have another personnel move over to that one. And now that's the person who resigned from the middle school. So you were filling the middle school one, but we still have the high school one. We have some options. We have somebody internally that we can place into the position and open up a different position that that person is currently doing. We, the preference is to wait on it because, again, that's an assignment. That doesn't necessarily mean the person wants to do it. So we try to leave it open as long as we can, and then make a decision over the summer whether we have to do it. So otherwise, believe it or not, at this point, that's where we're sitting with certified. We know some other people are still looking, so, but Mary Ann is, I think Mary Ann's done a wonderful job trying to fill these needs. So that's what I've got.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 7.1, the approval of the May 13 regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second? All those in favor say aye, and opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda under claims of an account, $189,367.34. In your board packet is the treasures report, the Minnesota liquid asset activities account, a donation. There is a resignation for Rachel, or Rochelle?
Rochelle.
Rochelle Gilbert, effective at the end of the school year. Approved the resignation for Sarah Choice, counselor, effective at the end of this year. Also the resignation for Jade Arston Cluckey, fax teacher, end of the year, and Christina Hogan, at the end of this year. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions?
Is, have we got that fax one filled yet, or going to be, or that's going to be opening up?
No, we've got, that opened up, and we've got the counseling position open up. So, you know, after tonight now, I can tell you, we do have some applications, which is good for the counseling one. I think we have, I think we have five, which is surprising and good. The fax one is going to be difficult.
Is it still just a part-time position?
Yes. And I don't know the extent of it until Wayne and I get a chance to see where we're sitting with it and see what the enrollment is on some of these classes. Now, there is an example of one that we may be looking for what's called the old Community Expert, which is now Tier One. So, you know, there, I've actually sent a Tier One app out to someone already. If people have at least five years of experience in a related field, then they can actually apply for a Tier One license, which is the same as the old Community Expert. And it's a one-year license, you have to re-advertise every year, keep doing it year after year until you can find someone. And because it's a part-time position, that's, you know, that's one of the reasons we lost the person we had. They were able to find a full-time. So I don't-
Can you explain, oh, sorry, can you explain, when did it go to a part-time position?
It's, it's been part-time since I've been here.
Okay. Because where in high school it was a full-time?
Yeah. It's been, you know, we, we basically have 1.6 FTEs in the fax department. Because we have a full-time one at the middle school and a part-time. You know, it may be one of these that, again, that's one of the reasons I want to have that 612 conversation with the board and with the administration, because we have to look at next year, but we also have to look at with our career academy, how may that change things? Because high likelihood that we're going to have in that realm in food service and all of that in the career academy. If we do that at the secondary level, we'll have a full CTE program there, which would change trying to compete for halftime positions and all that. So it's going to be a transition period over the next couple of years.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.1, the records disposal. And they were listed, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Lindsay.
Motion by Lindsay, seconded by Amy. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.2, this is the insurance. This is the carrier that we already have, Liberty Mutual, looking to approve them again as our insurance.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion, second by Ronnie, any questions?
And if anybody has any questions on it, or Cindy can definitely give any updates about it, we know we've had some changes with it. Anything you want to just bring the board up to speed on it?
Our experience on the workers' comp has went up to 1.7 something, so we actually had some that wouldn't even look at us for workers' comp for this next year because our workers' comp is so high. So we have to do something, or we might not be able to get workers' comp insurance in the future.
Now, if there's any good news on that-
There's some news.
We've been looking at the usage, and the reason it's so high right now, they do this over a period of, what is it, three years they look at? So they look at all of our workman's comp for three years, and then, the good thing is our highest of our years will go off this next year. Okay? Because we had some high claim cases. If you think back, we had some, we had an individual that slipped on the ice, that broke hip and all of that. So some of that stuff will come off the books. But we have one particular department that has more issues. And it's, it's not going to change because, you know, it's in our food service area. We have, and, and some of that has, they have to, you know, they have to look at, what are the age of our personnel and all those things. And so we have a lot of shoulder problems and what else not, and some of that stuff comes with age.
Is there someone we can bring in that-
Yeah, they actually want to bring somebody in.
Like to go over the safety and look at ergonomics and stuff?
Yep.
Do they have annual training of any sort? Because I know that that would be something that would-
They, they do. They, they do what we're, you know-
Practices, you know?
Some, some of this is, if you look at our demographics in the jobs, we have, we have very different demographics than most places would have for food service, other industries, just by our ages. We've got a lot of people in the 50s, 60s and such. Compare that to restaurants where you probably have 20s and 30s, and so you're going to have a little bit more issues with some of those joints and shoulders, and that's what we're running into. It's a lot of in the shoulders for issues. And it's not that they're having the lift stuff, but it's, it's just even this moving and the rotator issues, lots of rotator issues. So we've identified the type of issues we've got. But a lot of it, they'll tell, the first thing workman's comp will tell us is, and our insurance is that these are the most common injuries dealing with the age. So we don't have any good solutions for that unless we change compensation and can attract a little bit more.
Okay, we have a motion, and it is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.3, this is the milk bids. These are recommendations from Chelsea to go with cast clay for the fiscal year '20. All those, I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. We're going back to Panagol after checking out Bimbo for a while.
I think for a couple of years, but I know I talked to her at the wellness committee, and she was sharing her concerns and just issues every week, so.
Nice to see us go back with Panagol, that is a local person from our school district. So looking for a motion to go back with them.
So moved.
Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This 9.5, this is the meal prices. Now, the state, the federal sets the budget, sets the, how much that we have to pay. So we don't, we don't look to try to make any money off of that at all, and so we're required to have that, the prices that we have. So elementary prices, you see that they're going up 10 cents. Secondary is going up 20 cents. Adult is going up. Extra fee, extra entree is going up. And of course, reduced breakfast and reduced lunch, the free are remaining the same.
Are these prices, like going up each year by 10 cents?
It's usually, it depends on what they set the rate at. Sometimes it's been a nickel, sometimes it's been 10 cents, 20 cents, but that comes to us.
How did we do last year in food service on budget?
I'm trying to remember if it was, it wasn't too, Cindy, do you remember if it was?
We did fine. We did have to pay back the snack program because the snack program went whole. And we had, you know, we had our food service audit this year, and everything went fine, except we didn't pay that back. We actually, it's okay, we didn't have, normally, if we have an overreach, then there's other things we can change, or how we have to do anything like that. So you can't go over much either.
Yeah, there wasn't any, there wasn't any drastic thing, Ronnie, because typically what we always do, of course, with the audit, is you start out with putting certain percentages in for the personnel, and then you wait to find out how the subsidies come out and all that. And then once you get that, then you update, okay, what, what percents can you put in for the personnel, so that you don't have any, you don't lose any aids.
Many years ago, we used to go in a hole, it seemed like, on food service, you had to keep raising it.
Right. And, and now, of course, with the model that they've done with setting the prices, everything gets put into this lovely spreadsheet, which just tells you exactly, you must raise it by X amount. So it's completely set by the federal government. It, we don't even, we don't even have to worry about whether there's a recommendation. It's just automatic. If you want the money coming in from the federal without it being prorated down- You're going to raise it to the following amount to get the full federal aid.
And Chelsea's been very good at getting us a lot of grants, so I think that helps us to stay out of the red in that area.
I suppose the federal's going to give us more aid or something out of this last package for schools, so we'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay, so the increases are on your board packets. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
And I want to table 9.6.
9.6?
Yep.
Okay.
Because there's a couple that still want to check on, because we've got to double-check their past history, whether there was some tenure.
Okay, so 9.6 will be tabled. Moving on to 9.7, certified contract, Rachel Gilbert. You saw her resignation up, and now she's moving into a different position. So that's why you recognize the name again. Looking for a motion to approve her contract?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is the early retirement agreement. This is to approve the early retirement agreement for Cindy. Cindy, effective June 30th, 2019.
Cindy, what? Okay.
That is a motion by Amy, is there a second?
Lindsay.
I'm sorry. It's okay. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions, everybody?
Have we got the email?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to 10.1, this is the certified contract for Amy Powers. This is one Brian had said that we had, this one, this one is filled, it's speech and language. See, this is MA 10, step seven, so she comes to us with some experience. So that's good to see. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Laura, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy. All those in- All those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed, same sign. This is the certified contract for Dan Morelli, special ed teacher. New in this position, but not new to our district.
What is apparent, Glendon, is that correct?
At Dilworth.
So he's been in our, he's been in our district. Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 10.3, the confidential contract. This is for Eric Exner. Again, this is one that our committee has selected to take Cindy's position. Comes with lots of experience, and him and Cindy have both green on, so it's, that's a good sign, you know? He kind of joked, said that's money, because it's, you know, the finance part. So looking for a motion to approve his contract. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second? Second. Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed, same sign.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. You have, you have big shoes to fill. So welcome aboard. We will move on to 10, 11.1. This is, those of us on negotiations are meeting right after. And the next school board meeting is Monday, June 10, at 6:00. Those of you on committee with operations, please get together afterwards, set up that time to meet.
Yeah. We can talk about that. And then policy?
Policy. We want to, we want to get a policy meeting. It won't have to be a long meeting, but at least we, we can do the 902, and then the other thing, then I can give you an update on, here's all the new ones, versions that have come.
Okay.
And we want to start all over again with those. So we need to get that going, so we can meet afterwards and just see if we can come up with some dates on that. The other thing, announcement-wise, I did send out this afternoon, Tracy did a real nice summary on the Park Avenue meeting today. So she sent that out to our whole admin team and operations group. I forwarded it to all of you, as is, because I thought it was just a real good summary. Notice that on June 3, we're going to move the luncheon, so that we don't have it here, it'll be over at the Dilworth site. Because the whole thing's going to be tore up, they're going to mill up everything, so this will be a disaster.
And in the email, it said, change it to Glendon.
Yeah, and then she sent out a second one, because somebody else caught it, that, so it's, it'll be at Dilworth for the luncheon.
Okay. And also, graduation is Sunday.
Sunday, and you three are all going to be up, up front. We'll have, we'll make sure you don't have to fight over chairs, like musical chairs up there. So we need three for them.
Where do we meet?
Usually meet in the lobby.
Okay.
Probably about 1:30 for sure.
Yep, it's at 2:00. Anybody have anything else to add? Okay, is 6:53, meeting is adjourned.